It's 4:55, so we'll try to get Carl on the line. I just asked him if he has an airplane mode, so let's see. Okay. I'm going to call to order the Municipal Housing Agency Governing Board meeting for December 23rd, 2024. First item is a roll call.
Bozen.
Here.
Simonsen.
Here.
Voss. Coleman.
Here.
Westergaard.
Yes.
Mandelbaum.
Here.
Gatto.
Here.
We have a quorum.
The next item is number two, approving agenda as presented and/or as amended.
Move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, please vote.
Six yes.
Motion carries. The next item, three, is the approval of the REIT properties as developer for the rental assistance demonstration conversion of Royal View Manor, Board Communication Number 24-529. Any discussion? If not, is there a motion?
I can move item three.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, please vote.
Six yes.
The motion carries.
Motion to adjourn, Your Honor.
There are second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, take a voice vote. Are all in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
We are now adjourned and will reconvene at 5:00 AM. 5:00 PM.
We ain't doing it 5:00 AM.
I don't think we'd have many people here. We're back up.
Do they have it on? Do they have them on do not disturb or something? I could have him maybe try to call me on. I'll text. On this phone here.
Turn your mic.
Okay, can you hear it now? We're calling the meeting to order. Sorry, it was on before. Of December 23rd, 2024. Please take the roll.
Bozen.
Here.
Simonsen. Coleman. Westergaard. Mandelbaum.
Here.
Gatto.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Next item is number two, approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended. And on tonight's agenda, we have 33-1A through C moved to 50-1A through C. On the consent agenda, on the regular agenda items, 50-1AC moved from 33-1AC. 53A is added, final consideration of ordinance above waiver requested by Steve Neighbors, City Agent Year, requires six votes. And 59 is the updated speaker's list.
Move approval.
It's been moved and seconded, please vote.
Six yes.
Motion carries. The next item is item number three, approving the consent agenda. These are items 30 through 45. These are routine items and will be enacted by one roll call vote without separate discussion unless pursuant to council rules. Council requests an item to be removed to be considered separately.
Move approval.
Could I pull item 42? I forgot to send that in, but I would like to have some discussion about item 42.
With that amendment?
You can move it and I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, please vote.
Six yes.
Motion carries. The next item is our hearings on number 47, on vacation of the North-South Alley right away lying west of and adjoining 2116 Searle Street and conveyance to Leonard Cosimo for $50. A is the first consideration of ordinance above. Jermaine comments from the general public, two minutes per person, 10 minutes maximum. Anyone wishing to speak to this? Seeing none?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, please vote.
Six yes.
Motion carries. Next item is 48. On request from 414-61st Street LLC, Daniel Doyle Officer for property located in the vicinity of 414-61st Street to amend the plan DSM, creating our tomorrow comprehensive plan to revise the future land use classification of the property from parks and open space and development control to community mixed use and to rezone the property from F Flood District to RX1 Mixed Use District to allow reuse of an existing building as an office. Choose one alternative below. It requires six votes for approval due to Plan and Zoning Commission recommending denial. A is deny or B to continue the hearing until January 13th, 2025 and direct the city manager and legal department to prepare the necessary legislation to approve. First is the parties in interest, the applicant for rezoning and those within 250 feet of the property to be rezoned. They will be given five minutes to speak. Second is Jermaine comments from the general public, two minutes per person, up to 20 minutes maximum. Is there anyone wishing to speak to this? Seeing none, I'll open it up for the council.
Seeing none, I'll.
Speak about this.
Okay. We'll get to your microphone, Heather.
Like, I would, oh, hello, my name is Heather Armstrong. I live in Ward Two. My concern about building anything in a floodplain is that everything is going to be washed down and flooded all the time. I used to live in the Chicago region and like there was a property like right there on River Road, it used to get flooded out all the time. So you would be better off saying deny to this because you don't want to build anything on a floodplain because then it keeps on overflowing. Like I've had that problem when I used to live in Chicago and then like the buses couldn't even get down this one street because the road is, was like completely flooded out.
Okay, thank you. I'll open it up.
Yeah, so I'm going to move to deny, so 48A. And this is an instance, it's an existing building. And the process for this is to deny the zoning and they can get a use variance to allow the existing building that I think, I believe lost grandfather rights, to allow the business to operate in the existing building. And so this is not something where we would allow new construction at this location, but we do want to support the continued use of this existing building. And just so you know, I don't believe this, this building, even in the high watermark that we had in 2018 with Walnut Creek at its record level, when we experienced that flash flood, I don't think this building got wet at that time. So it's not, it is in the floodplain and we don't want to encourage additional building in the floodplain itself, but I think we can support this, this continued use and go through the proper process.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, please vote.
Hey, you're on the phone here. Hold on just a second. We're on item 48 right now. There's just been a motion to deny. I'm going to transfer you in. Hold on just a moment.
We're having Councilman Voss join us, I believe by phone.
Are you able to hear us, Carl?
No, I don't. I can't, well, I can hear you, Laura.
Okay.
Yes.
Do you want to vote on 48A?
To deny? Sure, yes.
Yes, to deny.
Yes, on 48A, yeah.
That'll be seven yes.
Motion carries. Next item is 49. On 2025 Citywide PCC Pavement Patching Program Resolution Approving Plans, Specifications, Form of Contract Documents, Engineers' Estimate, Receive and File Bids and Designating the Lowest Responsive Responsible bidder as TK Concrete Inc., Tony J. Vermeer, President, for $1,387,796. Council Communication Number 24-512. A is the approval of the contract and bond. The general public may comment only to the plans and specifications, form of documents, engineers estimate or low bidder designation, and those will be the only comments to be considered, Jermaine. Two minutes per person, up to 10 minutes. Anyone wishing to speak? Seeing none, I'll open up the council.
I'll move 49, 49A, Your Honor.
It's been moved and seconded, please vote.
Voss votes yes.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Item 50, on Jordan Park Sprayground Resolution Approving Plans, Specifications, Form of Contract Documents, Engineers' Estimate, Receive and File Bids and Designating the Lowest Responsive Responsible bidder as the Henley Group LLC. Tyler C. Henley, President, for $560,752. Council Communication Number 24-513. A is the approval of the contract and bond. Again, the same speaking requirements. Anyone wishing to speak?
I see none, Your Honor. This is a great project for that part of town. I appreciate the hard work from our Parks Department and engineering and others. I will move item 50 and 50A.
It's been moved and seconded, please vote.
Voss votes yes.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. That is the end of our hearings and it is 5:11. So the next item is number 42. Amendment to Schedule Fees for Chapter 60 as it relates to rental inspections and rental property licensing and Chapter 26 regarding building and building regulations. Council Communication Number 24-534.
And so I appreciate this coming to us and I wasn't really aware of the fact that our fees have not been adjusted or keeping up until I got the email from staff on, I think it was Friday afternoon. And one of the things that I would be particularly interested on the rental side, this is only a small catch-up, I don't know what the, and I know staff said they prefer to do this or propose an incremental approach, that we would be coming back and voting to increase these fees, one, two, maybe three more times in the next few years. And I guess my question, particularly on the rental side, particularly where at the same time that our fees have been flat, the multifamily has changed their tax treatment, so they've gotten a pretty big tax break. I'd be interested in moving a little faster so that this revenue catches up. This is one of the few areas where I'd like us to be cost neutral, so our general operating budget doesn't have to, doesn't have to subsidize this program. And I think we could do it faster. I don't know what the, what difference that would make or what the, the fee schedule would look like. I, I sent an email to staff or to Chris Johansson about that and I don't think I saw a response yet today. But that's what I wanted to discuss and my hope is, I mean, I'm fine moving this, this amendment, but my hope is that maybe we could get that done so that that's part of this upcoming budget cycle and we get those operating, we maybe get the subsidization from the operating budget out of the rental inspection piece.
Josh, I would be very supportive of that, especially if it could cover the cost of being more transparent. I've mentioned this before and hope that we can deal with the way that people could look at rental inspections, the owner's, a contact information, maybe on our website. I think the neighbors would really appreciate knowing how to, to contact a bad landlord or a landlord that has a problem with their tenant, so all, all for what Josh, Josh is suggesting.
So Mayor and Council, we can bring this back and, and give you some choices as far as how aggressive to get on, on raising those.
If I read it correctly, we're 30% off of recovering our costs right now.
It takes us to 25, I believe.
Could I also get council's grants that will do this as staff and, and do that analysis? Because that, that'll give us plenty of comfort to get to within about 80% of, of the, the cost, maybe even 85% as opposed to if we were to hire somebody and, and pay for that service, which doesn't seem necessary.
Why wouldn't it, why can't we get it to cost neutral?
In order to get exactly to cost neutral, you'd want to have a third party actually review all that and I'm suggesting we don't go that far.
No, I don't want you to do that.
Yeah. And so we'll have that as part of the discussion when we bring it back.
That'll be fine. Okay, so.
I moved it with that comment.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, please vote.
Mayor, Bozen, I had a question that just raised in my mind if Neighborhood Services have not raised fees since 2016. I wonder how many other departments have not raised fees? So I appreciate Parks and Rec annually coming to us with a new fee schedule, but what other departments are lagging in adjusting their fees?
So Councilman Voss, this is Scott. We can address that as well when we bring the topic back? Understanding that our parts.
Perfect, perfect.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I asked this question when I submitted questions over the weekend, but it was not included in the questions shared with the rest of.
Okay, so it looks like we'll be reviewing all the departments and, and the fees and structures that we have.
Okay. I vote yes on this item, thank you.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. The next item is 46, repeal and replace Chapter 61 of the Municipal Code relating to property maintenance and vacant property. Council Communication Number 24-535. A is final consideration of ordinance above waiver requested by Chris Johansson, Director Neighborhood Services, requires six votes.
I'll move 46, 46A.
It's been moved and seconded, please vote.
But I have a couple of comments.
Okay.
If I may. So one, I want to thank staff for working through, I suggested some changes to this and I appreciate staff doing so because I think it's important on the maintenance code to tie, to tie our safety network and the work that we've done through the Ion program to, to this. I think this is a pretty, pretty big change. I mean, I'm, at this point, I am supportive, although I would certainly welcome giving the public a little more time to digest it. I don't think any, I don't think the difference between now and our January 13th meeting makes a, makes a huge difference and I'd feel a little more comfortable with a change as big as this is, just having it out there for the public to provide any additional feedback. I am appreciative of what staff has done working to, to get this ready and like I said, I support the amendments that were made and I'm appreciative of the explicit tie-in between the safety net and, and this program. So I don't know if, if that would be considered a friendly amendment to wait or not.
You don't want to, I mean, we've had this discussion for the first reading, you don't, you don't want to waive the third reading? Is that what you're asking me?
Correct. I, I'd be okay just leave, I mean, I, I think I've heard from some folks in the public who are looking at it, who maybe would appreciate time to digest. I plan on voting for it tonight. I think you could waive this second or third. I'd be more comfortable if we didn't. I'm not going to vote against it if we're not. That, yep. That, that has been changed.
Yep. I'm just gonna, I, I think we, we've had lots of discussion about this. I'm going to go ahead and leave my motion the way it is.
I'm supportive.
We, we need to get this moving forward. We talked about this for seven years.
Well, we talked, that's why we created Ion was the intention.
Could be 10, but I was giving the benefit of the doubt.
With that, there's been a motion, a second, please vote.
Voss votes yes.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. The next item is 50-1, items regarding 515 Walnut LLC's project to construct a 33-story, 390-unit high-rise apartment building at 515 Walnut Street. Council Communication Number 24-536. A is final terms of an urban renewal development agreement and approving a conceptual development plan. B is a grant agreement in the support of the construction project. C is the parking license agreement for the use of spaces in the city's 5th and Walnut Street parking garage.
So, Madam Mayor, if I may.
I think, well, let's get a motion, a second, and we'll have discussion.
I'll move 50I, A, B, and C.
Has it, okay, it's been moved and seconded, we'll open it up for discussion.
Well, I, I think everyone at this table is excited about this project. I think the project will be a good project for, for the city, but I, I am significantly less excited about the actual development agreement that has been presented to us. And my hope is that we could talk about some of the specific terms and some of the details. And I was hoping that, that there'd be some openness to working towards getting a few tweaks to the development agreement between now and our next meeting or even if we were willing to, to take some time, we could do a special meeting if, if it was determined to be urgent. But I'd like to share the language and, and see if, and walk through the language.
At this time though, we are not going to, to talk about development, this development agreement is what we have to vote on. And I appreciate you have language, but that is for our economic development team to work through.
Well, I mean, if I could talk about the process, because there are some things when, and the processes that we have preliminary terms and we vote on preliminary terms and then it comes back to us. And there are some pretty big changes in this development agreement from the discussion of preliminary terms. You know, when we had this discussion two years ago, there were some specific things and Councilmember Gatto led the discussion on, on that piece and asked specifically for apprenticeship programs and prevailing wage language to be included in the final agreement. That was something staff said, yes, we'll, we'll work on that and we'll bring that back to you. And those things are now not in the final agreement, so there was a change from the discussion we had and the direction we all voted for at this table and what we see in the final agreement. And the language that I do want to just share and see, because I think it's, it's pretty consistent with, with the development agreement. There are pieces of, and consistent with the discussion we've had and I would certainly appreciate, you know, I've had some conversation with developer, I'd like to understand why these things can't be included in our, our language. So for example, in 8.8, you know, we talk about how you have to follow, follow the, the law, including laws to have workers' compensation and unemployment insurance. And I think that's a good thing that's already in our agreement. But one thing that we haven't done that is done in Cedar Rapids and that this is a language, and I don't think this is a particular stretch, is, my hope is that we can ask upon request from the city for the developer to provide proof that they have the statutorily required unemployment insurance and workers' compensation insurance for all workers on the project and from all contractors and subcontractors at every tier of contracting. That is something that if they're following the law, I mean, when I bid a, when I bid a contract at my house, one of the things that, that I ask of, of the folks who are looking to do that work is, do you have the insurance and will you share that? I don't think it's too much to have that small piece of accountability. Another piece that Cedar Rapids has that I'd like to see us have, and I don't understand, again, this is a small thing, you know, they, they ask if there is a violation that an agency responsible for enforcing the matter finds, that the developer shall ensure that the violation is abated. And if that includes having to end a contract with a subcontractor who is, who is the one in violation, taking that step. Again, this is something that Cedar Rapids does. These are things that are no cost, but provide a little layer of accountability. I also would like to have more assurance on the apprenticeship. I had a conversation with, with the developer about this and I think from that conversation, a large majority of the contractors and subcontractors on this project will be folks who have a Department of Labor registered apprenticeship program. But there is nothing in the development agreement that says anything about that. And I'm flexible on the language. I, I had put out, what I have on my sheet is 90% because that's what the developer told me. And if 90% causes heartburn, I'm open for, for drafts of that. If a majority would provide greater comfort or a significant number, but I think there are ways to, to do that. A third item that I would like to see, and, and this one seems fairly simple to me, is that the developers required upon request from the city to provide a list of subcontractors at every tier of subcontracting performing work on the project. That's just a basic transparency piece. And we know one of the things, and this combines with, with some of the other provisions on a transparency on it, why we want to look at the insurance certificates. I mean, the US Treasury has been putting out notices about insurance fraud in construction. And part of the way that those, those things happen is someone can get their insurance for a project and say, you know, we're. project and say, "You know, we're a company. We've got insurance for up to 100 workers." And that same sub has 100 workers on this project, and if they have 100 workers down the street, they're underinsured, and that's a problem. And that's... Things like this provide just a little bit of transparency to help us avoid being part of anything that wouldn't be a quality and healthy way to do this. The fourth piece that I'd like to see are payroll records. You know, we've walked away, and my understanding is that prevailing wage is not something that we're able to do here, but payroll records are something. Any business is gonna have a way that they're currently doing payroll. It's not a cost to just verify payroll and for the city to be able to request those things. But I tried to do things that... All things that are consistent with the overall direction. None of these things require significant costs. All three of those pieces with the... Three of the four are things that Cedar Rapids, which I would say is, for a project like this, Cedar Rapids would be our most direct competitor in the state. All of these things are things that Cedar Rapids does today. So, my hope is that, since the amendment was made, that there'd be a friendly amendment to take some time to look at these four things and see if staff can negotiate that with the developer and have that back at our next meeting.
Mayor, may I speak to this?
Yes.
It frustrates me, and we often hear from developers, companies wanting to come into Des Moines, companies wanting to expand in Des Moines, that every time they meet with staff, there's something new that comes up. We are in the 11th hour. We have a development agreement. This is an exciting project. It's going to add a huge imprint to the city of Des Moines. I don't disagree with looking at some of these items, but to me, they are policy issues, not issues that should be negotiated at a council table in the 11th hour. In my way of thinking, if we... Let's say we deferred this for two or four weeks. There's not going to be resolution in two or four weeks. Our staff is gonna have to make the determination of all of these items. What is it going to cost the city? This development agreement, which has been modified, is costing us a few million dollars. At the very end of the project, we have no risk, and the funds, the $2 million that we're looking at is through TIF and tax abatement. We're not writing any checks. This is a home run. I would suggest that if we want these items to be attached to projects, there needs to be a policy defining what type of project, what size of project, what location of project, whatever parameters we want to assign to that, so on. Developers come to Des Moines, they know what the rules are at the beginning and not at the end. I'd like to move forward and support this project. It's a good project.
Counselman.
My comment is that I went through my emails from a year ago when we brought this up. We asked to have some language in the development agreement. I'm concerned about the apprenticeship program. And we told, "Yep, you know, we'll talk about that, we'll talk about that." We don't even see the final agreement until three days before this council. And it just seems that there's... I feel there is a real lack of... And when I'm told... Well, go ahead and vote no if you don't want a $140 million project. Of course, we want a $140 million project. Of course, we do. It's a wonderful thing for our city. It will provide jobs. It will provide food on the table for people. But the people that I represent, many, many tradespeople, and we are concerned. We're concerned about having a quality project. And it just seems to me that there's been too many sidebar conversations, small groups, whatever you want to call it. I mean, why couldn't we all sit down in the room and have an open meeting and say, "Let's talk about it." I mean, apprenticeship programs putting into the development agreement is important to me. And then, when I make the call, I'm told, "Well, if you don't want a $140 million project, fine, vote no." That just seems like a really inappropriate comment to be made.
Counselperson Westergaard, if I may, I agree with your thinking, and that's why we should discuss it. And I'm fine to do it in an open session as a matter of policy so we can include it in future projects, if that's what we choose to do.
So, I think I probably brought some of this up a year ago, asking for some of these things. And that was when there was four non-project-generated TIF payments that were going to go for this project. And that's a big incentive that we were able to have a lot more leverage of demanding all apprentice, all unions, everyone needs to work on this project that way. That has all been taken away. Councilmember Simonsen pointed all of that out. This project is a really good project. If you look, within 20 years, it generates $22 million worth of tax revenue. That's 20 years. Now, we're gonna start getting that revenue in 15 years because the tax abatement and the other things are up. It's over then. In 30 years, it's gonna generate $44 million. Without this project, it's $800 worth of taxes in 30 years for this project. Now, we... I represent a lot of constituents that are in the trades, obviously. They mean a lot to me in my constituency. They are going to get a lot of this work, the majority of it. This building is going to be built with quality because we have those codes in place. It's gonna be built safely because the contractor that's building it has... I've seen the buildings that he's built, and they're good, quality buildings. I agree with... We've been asking for a type of policy to put in place. This isn't the time to negotiate a deal at the table and try to submit language and do this. It is a time that we finally sit down and say, "Okay, when are we going to do this? What projects are we gonna do this for? What's the amount? Where is it going to be?" And just come up with a resolution, because we've gone back and forth at this table with this whole argument for a very, very long time.
Just hold on, Counselman Coleman.
I appreciate it. I moved it. I'm supportive of this project. I think it's a good project, and I think we'll find that it's transformative. I will also say, when we start these projects, I think I'm like a lot of people in this town and at this table, like, we want companies and subcontractors that provide good jobs, that are part of the trade profession in Des Moines. That's what we're rooting for. I think in this project, we've gotten to the point where it's either going to be a project that has hundreds of trade, high-quality jobs, union jobs, apprentice jobs, or it's gonna be zero, because trying to change this development at this time probably means the project dies. And we're not just talking about this project. I think Mr. Simonsen makes a really important point, and that is, everybody watches us, and they want to know that the city stands by our word when we sit down and negotiate and put a deal together. I've always believed that it's the council's top priority to do government well. And in this city, we have a city manager style of government. We task him with bringing these forward, and when it comes to us after our debate, as long as it's in conformance with the existing policies of the council, then it's a yes-or-no vote. Do we need to take a look at this? You know, I think there's a lot that you say. I'm all for high-quality, good jobs, well-trained. I'm glad that there are some trades that are gonna be a part of this. I think it's really important for the city to be supportive of that. But I do think we really have to get to doing this in the light of day as a policy, not about a single project. And so, I continue to be supportive. I want the city to be predictable. When the people that we have hired to do work on behalf of the citizens and the council do it, we owe it to follow through and either vote yes or no on it.
So, Mayor, just one question. With the whole verifiable payroll and all these other questions that are being thrown out... I've had this discussion with Cody Christensen multiple times. We have no one on staff to even get the records, to look at them, to know what they're doing. You know, are we just gonna get the records and then send them to the state, to the Department of Labor? Or what do we... I mean, we don't have the staff to do... I mean, how many people would we have to hire to implement that policy, even for just one project? I guess I'm... Because I've had this conversation multiple times, and I get where staff is coming from. Their hands, they're going in 20 different directions. So, I know if we throw this at them, who... First of all, do we have anyone qualified to even look at the records, to know what they're looking for? You know? Go ahead, Scott. I'd like an answer from our city manager, because I've had this discussion before, and I'd like to get this taken care of.
Sure. And I appreciate the conversation, but the focus here is, we have a great project in front of us.
Absolutely.
We do not... We have a couple of staff that do payroll for our own organization, so we have nobody available to do this kind of work. We would have to add that type of staff. Makes no sense. Would not recommend that. We have had pieces of these conversations in workshops and whatnot. We can sure bring it back. Part of that discussion, and I appreciate the earlier comments, is that we have talked with the developers in our community, and there are elements of this that they will walk away from projects rather than build in Des Moines. And so, we can bring that back to a workshop discussion and make sure that the policy is still correct. At the end of the day, it is still a policy for which staff will start their conversations. The goal is to get the best deal for each project that the staff will work through. And when you see it in this form at the council table, it is the best deal we believe we can get with this development. And so, as mentioned before, it needs an up vote or a down vote, and we can celebrate at the end, hopefully.
And if I can just add to finish my comment. We had a discussion about apprenticeship programs a year ago, and then it just gets sidelined. Nobody wants to talk about it. And, you know, what I've heard from several people have said, 90% of the people working on the job would be... Have apprenticeship programs. If that's the case, then what's the problem with just having that in the development that 80% are? Because if it's not in writing, it doesn't mean anything. You can have zero.
I think that the terms have been worked out. This is what they've signed, and so, again, it's something that we have to be aware of, and I appreciate Cedar Rapids, but we also have to be aware of our market that we're in. So, I think we all have to have a conversation in a greater context. Nothing's simple. Nothing's as-is in every community, and I think that we are in a competitive community with many opportunities that people could do something somewhere else, and that this is a project that has been... How many years? Eight? In the last two, three years aggressively? This is not something that comes along very often, as we all know, since 1991. We haven't had this. This is a synergy. It's housing. It's everything. We're saying we need more housing, and it's an opportunity to take part of a parking garage that we now took over to create opportunity for us. So, I know we've had that discussion, and like, has been stated, we will have... We can have further discussion on it.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. And part of my frustration, just from a process perspective, and we've had some conversation about these pieces, and there was supposed to be a public work session to address these things. And that public work session never happened. It was replaced with small group work sessions instead. And as a consequence, I don't know what the concerns of my colleagues are. I don't know how to address those concerns. And I'm fine doing this from a policy perspective and that broader conversation, but in the absence of having that policy discussion, this is the time that we get to have that discussion. Like, in the context of, I'm forced to vote yes or no on this particular project, and from a project perspective, I am very excited about this project. I love adding density, and I love the fact that we're changing the skyline. I'm very excited about the project. I'm less excited about the process. I'm... I don't know if some of these things had been presented earlier in the process, if there'd been a different discussion, but when I talked to the developer on Friday after this had been inked, I asked about these specific pieces, and what I was told is staff didn't even bring up any of these. Staff didn't bring up these terms. The developer told me specifically, staff did not bring up the things that you were raising.
Mayor, may we vote?
Yes. Okay, we've heard it, Josh. We understand you want more policy discussion. The deal is, our staff has worked on every development we've ever had come forward, and we've not had this discussion before. I understand the scope of this is much larger. But I believe we have a motion and a second, and we can have more discussion at a work session on it. So, please vote.
Boss votes yes.
Seven, yes.
Motion carries.
Mayor, I don't know if this is the appropriate time to ask this, but I would like to put dates on the calendar, schedule a public hearing, a workshop session in the morning. I don't know whether we can afford some of these things or not, but the facts are out there. We should see those facts and let council make a decision. So, I don't know if it would be...
Well, we'll work on that schedule, because I think we're also looking at different monitoring reports and stuff, too, so we'll work with the city manager and get it on schedule.
Yeah, it's important that we know what it's gonna take to monitor some of these things. And how many 33-story buildings does Cedar Rapids... I'm not a Cedar Rapids guy, so I'm not sure...
I've been there.
How many 33-story buildings Cedar Rapids has? Can someone answer that for me? Do they have a lot of them?
You'd be surprised how...
Did they have 33-story buildings?
I don't know that they're that tall, but they have high-rise buildings.
Okay. But they don't have 33-story buildings, right?
Okay, I think that this has been a long time coming, so I just want to thank staff for the time and dedication and for people's commitment to keep moving forward on something that is not an easy project, so...
And Mayor, I would also like to commend the developer for having flexibility, too. We know these are trying times and changing times, but we look forward to a successful project.
Okay, with that, we're going on to item number 51.
21 floors, okay.
Amending Chapter 114 of the municipal code regarding traffic regulation changes as follows. Council Communication number 24-516. A is parking modifications. One, 17th Street, Ingersoll Avenue to Woodland Avenue. Two, High Street, 16th Street to 17th Street. B, parking correction. Update parking restriction to match field condition on the east side of East 6th Street between East Walnut Street and East Locust Street. And C, code modifications of Locust Street between 3rd Street and 4th Street.
I'll move item 51, A, 1, and 2, and B, C. And pursuant to Rule 42A, move to waive the second and third reading.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded, please vote.
Ms. Boss, huh?
Boss votes yes.
Seven, yes.
Motion carries. Item 52, amending Chapter 114 of the municipal code relating to non-vehicular traffic, including pedestrian conveyances and bicyclists right-of-way at certain crosswalks. Council Communication number 24-511.
I'll move 52, and pursuant to Rule 42A, waive the second and third reading, Your Honor.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded, please vote.
Boss votes yes.
Seven, yes.
Motion carries. Next item is 53, amending Chapter 114 of the municipal code relating to city-owned electric vehicle charging stations. Council Communication number 24-510. A is final consideration of ordinance above. Waiver requested by Steve Neighbors, city engineer, requires six votes.
I'll move 53 and 53A, Your Honor.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded, please vote.
If I could just say a couple of words on this?
Absolutely.
Okay.
The one guy that choose them? The one guy that brought it up is going to pay for it now.
Right. This is against my self-interest.
And Scott's, too.
Scott, too.
Because I've been getting free, free electric vehicle charging, but I think this is the right way to, we should always be looking at how we incorporate best practice and how we get the most out of the infrastructure that we invest in. And that is what this is designed to do. These rates are consistent with what you see in any other city, and they're designed to help turn over the use in these charging stations. You know, right now, there are times when I drive by and I'm looking to charge, and all four stalls are full, but maybe one of those cars is actually still charging.
Can you tell? From the outside?
Yes, you can tell from the outside.
So do we give them a ticket if they?
Right now, we don't, right now, we don't do anything, but the equipment is sophisticated enough that-
They can do it.
If you're fully charged and you're sitting there, you can get, they can charge your credit card. So you don't even have to ticket. You don't even have to ticket them, and you don't need staffing for it, and that'll get someone's attention real quick.
Probably will.
And you'll, you'll actually use this infrastructure, because we've invested in it, use it like, like it should be. And this will also help, again, be another piece that maybe will be self-sustaining rather than, rather than a subsidy. And in tight budget times, it's appropriate to ask that something like this pay cost.
Right.
So I'm glad we're making this change. I wanted to explain that change to the public, and I hope we think about how we can use other infrastructure efficiently as well.
Okay, it's been moved in seconded. Councilman Boss?
Boss votes yes.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Item 56, amending chapter 30 of the municipal code relating to regulations of certain tobacco products and providing penalties. Council communication number 24-525. A is final consideration of ordinance above. Waiver requested by Laura Baumgartner, city clerk, requires six votes.
I'll move 56 and 56A, Your Honor.
Second.
You want a comment?
I do want to comment.
Right on.
Okay.
And this is an opportunity, and-
There've been several of us on the council who've had some discussions, and I know we're not Iowa City, but Iowa City has taken some measures to address, to address tobacco products and vaping in their zoning code. And I think that's a, I mean, I think Iowa City should be commended for taking those steps, and I think from a public health perspective, we should be looking at taking similar action. And I know Councilmember Boss has been eager to, to do something like this, and since we're making some changes already to that area of the code, I think this is an opportunity to at least get, get council, the whole council to maybe weigh in and-
I think they were looking at-
And then maybe get an update from when legal, if you're already looking, when we can expect to see some of those other changes or-
Discussion.
Discussion about it.
Yeah, discussion. Okay. So, it's been moved in seconded.
We are a cyclone state, not a Hawkeye state.
Boss votes yes.
He didn't say that very loudly.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. 57, amending chapter 26 of the municipal code relating to building and building regulations. Council communication number 24-531.
I will move item 57, and pursuant to rule 42A, I'll waive the second and third reading unless my colleague has a comment, and we'll, we'll hold off on it here.
I don't have anything to say on this particular one, but it will remind us that we are a deliberative body, policy-making body.
Please vote.
Boss votes yes.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Item 58, amending chapter 60 of the municipal code relating to pest control, light, and ventilation in rental properties. Council communication number 24-537.
I'll move 58, and pursuant to rule 42A, I'll waive the second and third reading.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. Any discussion, if not, please vote.
Boss votes yes.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. The next item is 59, is our public speaking portion. We provide speakers under the public speaking portion the opportunity to address the council for up to three minutes each, for up to 20 speakers, for a total of one hour agenda. Speakers will be called forward individually, and we ask everyone to please state their name, address, or ward prior to providing comments. Please keep comments germane and avoid references to personalities or character attacks, as those types of comments do not contribute to the purpose for which this public forum exists. As a reminder to the council and the public, this public speaking time is not a time for the council to engage in discussion. Matters requiring attention will receive appropriate staff and/or council follow-up at a time after the meeting. Thank you for your support of Des Moines, and we appreciate your input. And the first one is Jolene Prescott.
Hi, my name is Jolene Prescott. I live at 3013 3rd Street in Des Moines in Ward 2. Before I start any comments, I just want to say, the people at the library have been so kind to me, and they have really listened to me and helped me through a lot of these problems. I wanted to start off with, a year ago, they started no late fees. Well, for me, that's causing a problem, because I'm a robust reader, and I like to read a lot, and I like to fill out those little challenges they have. And so I put on hold a book called "In These Hollowed Halls." It's for dark academia, you know, so I could read that. And the book never came back to the library. And I, and I thought, you know, is this ever going to come back? Well, finally, it had been like, almost a week and a half overdue from the first person, and my daughter just said, hey, I can put it on your Kindle, you know, for a couple bucks. And so, but she put it on my Kindle. Well, then, I had another one where I wanted to read with a friend, and I'm in this widows' group, and their friend of mine, Joanne, said, we, you know, we might want to read "A Widow's Guide to Dead Bastards" by Jessica Wait. This is a woman, this is a real story about a woman who, husband died, and she found out all kinds of stuff. So I thought, I'm second, okay, I'm second on this hold list, right? So six weeks, max, I'll have to wait for this book. This is early October. Well, the first person on the hold list kept it an extra week. The second person has yet to return it, and it's the only copy. Now, I, I know that fines hurt people in lower economic status than others, but I think there's a place for fines somewhere. And I guess I just want to get the word out. I guess maybe people don't understand, if something's on hold for another person, you need to return it. It's not going to get automatically renewed. And I've been, and I have talked to Sue Woody, you know, I've worked with a lot of people. I will continue to work with them on this problem. I guess, my home phone number is 515-244-1484. If anybody has had this similar problem, I want to know about it. I know, that's not my cellphone, I would never give that up. But we, we, we want to, I guess I want to work with the library on this. So, and I am working with them. I've seen a loophole in their thing here, so I'm going to talk to Sue about that, but I just wanted to tell you that, thank you for a good library staff, and please return your books. Thank you.
Thank you. I think you got the message out. Garland Armstrong?
Happy holidays, Garland Armstrong, Ward 2. I just would like to make sure the city of Des Moines talks to them about especially pot bellies, because every time, by 6th Avenue and Locust Street, because every time they're supposed to put the extended hours there, they never do, because they're on that havoc, they, because of the air conditioning, the HVAC, and, and they never, ever got it done to extend the hours like they did before, up until seven o'clock, and, and when they close at two o'clock, me and my wife have to go out to the one in West Des Moines on Mills Civic Parkway. So I just would like to know, when are they going to be able to make sure about, when is that going to be up and ready, so me and my wife don't have to go all the way out there before they close at eight o'clock, so they can extend the hours again up until seven? Because that's, because every time we want to go there after two o'clock, why they're closing early? And that is a, that's a big mistake for that, because you need more revenue to extend the hours. And I think one day you need to talk to, have a workshop talking residents about having one on a Sunday if they don't want to go all the way out to West Des Moines, and they said, we need the pot bellies opening up here in Des Moines on a Sunday hours, like the one they have there. So I think the time is right now going into 2025. Y'all should talk about it, get the pot bellies open up on a Sunday, and extend the hours, too, on a Saturday, like, like seven days a week they're doing in West Des Moines. You should do it here, too, for Saturday and Sunday, because the time is now.
Okay.
I'll be glad to answer any questions or comments if you have anything to say.
Thank you, Garland. We will look into it and talk to them about it. The next one is Heather Armstrong.
Mayor, can I say happy birthday to Heather?
Yes.
Her birthday is just nine days away, away, and you're always so kind to us for coming.
Thank you.
She's a New Year's lady.
Like, I've been to one of the budget public hearings. I'm surprised you guys are in the green, unlike, unlike the people in, unlike the city of Chicago, which are like a $2 billion in the red. You need to talk to them in the suburbs of why there's so much in the red, and so that they can have a balanced budget, too, like Des Moines has. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather.
Good job. Thank you.
Devin Fishback?
Thank you, councilors. I'm Devin Fishback. I don't live in Des Moines, but I am the president of Carpenter's Local 106, so I represent a lot of members who live here in Des Moines, and I represent their interests. About the 33-story project, I would like to first off say, I'm excited. I'm excited for that project. I'm pro that project. I'm in support of that project. I don't have anything against Builder Kenny, or Joe Teeling, or the Development Group, but what I would like to say is, there is an issue in the state of Iowa and in the city also, and the issue is, we somehow think that tax increment financing and tax abatement doesn't really affect taxpayers, but it does. We need to see that stuff going back to Iowa taxpayers. We need to see Des Moines citizens doing that work, that then pay state and federal taxes for doing that job, and then that money comes back to the city or the state, and then it's just a big circle. And for some reason, we can't figure out how to do that. It seems like we don't want to even try to learn how to do it. You know, you guys kind of smirked at Josh when he mentioned Cedar Rapids, and that's not being Cedar Rapids, but I think, you know, some of the things that they're doing in some of other cities, we could take note of. As the city of Des Moines, being the capital of Iowa, I think it's important to be the frontrunner, to be leading the way on development projects. And I understand some of your developers say, ah, we won't continue to develop, or we'll walk away from projects if you stipulate these things, but we've got to be willing to, as a city, put our taxpayers first, and not just these people from out of state who want to use out-of-state construction companies to come do out-of-state labor. And if you think that I'm lying or joking about this, I have plenty of evidence to back it up and to back up those projects that we've seen go that way. So that's what I'd like to say, and again, thank you for your time.
Mayor, may I make a comment?
Thank you.
Sir, I appreciate your comments, and this project is putting this issue on the forefront to us, so we would welcome participation.
Thank you.
Carol Maher?
Mayor Bozen, members of the city council, my name is Carol Maher, and I live in Ward 3 in downtown Des Moines. I attended two of the four city budget information sessions this year, as the city manager and finance director know, and have for the past several years. I've also sat in this room for budget work sessions, taken notes, read dense budget documents, and generally tried to be an engaged and informed resident. I know, and you know, this will be a very tough budget year, based on changes made by the state legislature that will limit the amount of tax assessment growth by, in our case, 50%. So I was shocked, frankly, when I raised the issue on the number of excess spaces in city-owned parking garages with city manager Sanders, and was met with great pushback. The total number of spaces we own, there it is, 5,424. Why do we continue to carry excess parking inventory on our books? It's not in excess. We need the inventory for economic development, I was told. If we need these spaces for economic development, then why does the city have to carry the risk and the costs associated with this inventory? These are valuable downtown parcels that earn no property tax revenue, must be maintained in our CIP, and I can't imagine there's grant funding for this, and are managed by ABM at another expense to us. What is the cost to Des Moines taxpayers to house cars from the suburbs while the city is in desperate need of housing people up and down the spectrum? Wouldn't it be better to sell these garages at 50 cents on the dollar, 10 cents on the dollar, and move the risk to the private sector? Well, we can look at Polk County for some inspiration. Polk County, can you believe it? Yes, the county is actively marketing the Cherry Street parking lot through an RFP process. How great is that? Seven parcels, nearly two acres of mixed-use zoning across from Dart Central, where every bus route launches from, with street-level activation on three sides and no minimum parking requirement. This baby will be the ultimate in transit-oriented development. Please, you moan and groan that 40% of our parcels are not on the tax rolls. Be a part of the solution. Market these parking garages and help break our addiction to a car-centric downtown. And democracy dies in darkness. Not only do you shut down my representative from speaking and raising topics on this dais, you're shutting all of his constituents down. He's representing us, and the smirks and the other lack of respect is noticeable. It's seen.
Thank you. Joe Derby?
Joe Derby. I'll be sure to keep this brief, because I feel like I'm the only thing standing in the way of you guys going home. Good evening, Madam Mayor and city council members. My name is Joe Derby. I represent the Ironworkers Local 67 from Des Moines, Iowa. Thank you for your dedication to our city and its citizens. Your leadership is instrumental in driving the growth and success of Des Moines. We are thrilled to be a part of this historic moment as we build a once-in-a-lifetime project right here in our city. This building has the potential to become the defining landmark that showcases Des Moines' innovation, ambition, and future. It's a project we can all be proud of, and it speaks to strength of our, it speaks to the strength of our community and to the vision of our growth. As we build our city's future, we must ensure it's built on fairness, accountability, supporting fair employment practices, and ensuring workers have proper benefits. This will strengthen our workforce, protect our community, and uphold the quality we've come to expect in Des Moines. Congratulations to all of us involved in this incredible project, and thank you for your leadership and your continued commitment to our city. Together, we are building something truly remarkable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'll move item 59, A through F, receiving file.
It's been moved in seconded, please vote.
Boss votes yes.
Seven yes.
I just want to say, as we close out this year of 2024, it's been a great year, and I just want to thank all of our city staff and all the workers who make our city what it is, and the dedication they've had and have had over the years. So I just want to wish everybody a happy holiday. Thank everyone who came to this evening, and with that, this meeting is adjourned.